Good afternoon. This is Parsonsville Planning Board Meeting on July the 20th at 6 o'clock, 6:00 PM. And we'll call it the meeting to order at this time. In doing so, we, I hope everyone has a copy of the agenda in front of you so you can follow along with us. If you don't, do you have extra copies? Okay. And since we call it to order, the item, the second thing on your list will be, we have a public hearing number one, site plan review for Dawn Barrett, who's the applicant, at 20 Federal Road, Mount U-04, Lot 004. Change of use from retail to residential.
She has withdrawn her application?
Yes, I was going to read that next.
Alright.
Let me get down here and find it. I do, we all have copies of that as far as we know.
Yep.
There will be no, uh, public hearing for, for number one, Dawn Barrett, because she submitted a letter to the Board of Selectmen who forwarded to us. And, uh... Here it is. She's on Thursday, July the 7th, to the Board of Selectmen. She says, "Morning at this time, I have decided to not continue with changing use of 20 Federal Road." So she withdrew her applications. And this was forwarded to us through our executive, uh, our executive secretary. So there will be no public hearing number one. Because that application's pulled at this time. So, we can skip right on down. If you're, I hope everyone's here for public hearing number two. Are the applicants here?
Yes.
Good. Public hearing number two, oh. Do we have to make a motion to close after a public hearing number one, or not?
We never both opened it.
We didn't, yeah, I did, I opened the meeting. I opened the meeting, is what I did, which started the agenda. Should we close the public hearing number one?
Do you want to make a motion to accept the withdrawal?
Yes, I think we should. Andy, can you make a motion for us, please?
To the Charlie McCarthy. Uh, move to accept Ms. Barrett's letter of remo- re- withdrawing her application and closing the public hearing related to it.
Second. All in favor, but show of hands. Unanimous? Okay, now then we'll go down to item number three on the agenda, which is public hearing number two. We'll open it at this time. Site plan review for Catherine Hadley, applicant, A.J.'s Lane, Mount U-07, Lot 008. Current proposed summer camp, bathroom addition. Is the outcome here? Okay. I'm going to read the application. Let me find it over here. I guess what I read is just fine. I think what I read on the, on the introduction is suffice for the, uh, to open the floor to the public hearing at this time, to see if anyone has any complaints, concerns, or any information they want to pass on to the board for this application at this public hearing for A.J.'s Lane, for the, for Catherine Hadley's applicant, application. Anybody from the floor wishes to speak on this?
I think that closes the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want to go over what you saw at the sidewalk?
Yes. The sidewalk, I forgot, thank you, Desiree. Saban, would you brief us on the sidewalk, please?
We conducted our sidewalk as advertised. We felt they had addressed all the issues missing on their map. It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward.
So have you found everything in place as far as?
I thought everything was in place and that it would actually be an improvement and more protection to the river for them to continue this project.
That's this map here?
Correct.
Okay. I was not there, that's why we need to do that briefing.
Aaron and Roger were there with me, and Harvey.
Good, good.
So, um, I wasn't there either, and I think we should probably reduce ourselves.
We don't have to. Wait the book reads, we ask MMA. What did MMA tell us? As long as we got someone there that either took notes or briefed us on the sidewalk visit, we have the, we can continue and still can vote on it.
And you both were here last week and you've got the updated drawing, so...
Give me my totals, we can do that.
Alright.
I checked into that.
Drawing was very accurate.
Huh?
The new drawing was very accurate.
Okay. Okay. Now they put all the, the joining roads on, the driveway, a scale. And this down here by the broken line is a little addition you want to put on for, what is it, the bathroom?
Yes.
Okay.
So if there's nobody here to make any comment, we should address it later. As a site plan review, we should just close the public hearing.
Right, get to the public hearing.
And then we'll get to further down.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor closing the public hearing? Unanimous? Okay. Now then, we'll, we'll travel down our normal agenda now. We're going to head forward. Correspondence, and we have lots of them.
Minutes.
Oh, no, correspondence first.
Sorry.
I mean, you've got a big thick book from Effingham Planning Board, the MEA people. We just got another letter from July the 19th, which is a technical review. They found more flaws in their, uh, the application. So, I mean, it's just, goes on and on and on.
Before you got here, I wanted to, um, ask the board to consider whether... My feeling, as you know, I've been over to those meetings and I'm involved with it to some degree, but from my experience with these kind of things, it's going to go on and on. We're going to be burdened with all this paperwork that really, like I say, is...
Wait, how do you say it?
Is there a basket of cats?
Yes, there is.
Is there a basket of cats? So, I'm, I'm of the opinion, but I wanted to bring it to the whole board, that we should not, Desiree should not print all this stuff out, take, you know, time, money, pounds, money and resources, and not forward it to us, and we don't have to read it, because, you know, if you want to be informed about this, you know, you've got the stuff to find out.
Right.
So it's kind of like just keeping a bunch of stuff on a plate that we're not going to need.
That's true. It just, it just keeps building up, and this is thicker, thicker.
Yeah.
Unless it gets to a point where they ask the town of Parsonsville to come to a meeting and have something to say or interject. We, they haven't done that recently, have they? No.
And I don't think they will, because they're inundated with opinions.
Lots of opinions, and lots of people that have signed an affidavit, or signed up for people that were in, what, 672, something like that? So, if someone would like to make a motion along this line that we would, uh, not be in tune to having this information continue to be sent to us and printed off by our executive secretary, I'm, I think we should do that. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll do it, since nobody else seems to be awake.
Thank you, Andy.
We know that the secretary no longer forward to us the communications relevant to the Mina gas station situation, and that they no longer be printed out, etc.
Okay. Second. All in favor? Show of hands. Unanimous? We got rid of that one, too.
Did you want the Cormier letter as correspondence, or are you going to add that to later on?
What's that?
The Cormier letter. Did you want that later on, or do you want that under correspondence?
I'm going to add that under down there, where it's, it's kind of like, it's almost like, well... I want it down there where we have site plan review for, uh, new business under the Allard, Colleen Allard Federal Road. I'd want it to be there.
Okay.
So if that makes sense, where that should be at?
Yep.
It's in the same package?
When you get there, just say that you received that as well.
Good. I will probably briefly read over that, highlight it. Okay. I want it, I want it to be put there.
Before we move off to Mina gas station, um, I just wanted to follow up on the letter that we allegedly sent to the select board.
Yes, I did.
She did.
I did send it, and, um, the selectmen got it and then directed it.
Harvey?
Our position was that we sent the original letter asking for me to have it on the table right now with the last power of the town. But we got it from, and if you read that, it's like, it's quite, it's, it's, it's going through a couple other things.
So this letter here is July the 19th, it's very recent. It's just, we just got this.
I know, I totally wouldn't say that.
You're right.
So, so what you're saying is, you don't think we need to do another letter at this time?
I don't think the selectmen were not in favor of, you know, at this point.
Okay. Jeff says it.
It has to do with that. Selectmen's decision, the chairman said that since the judge ruled, it was okay. They feel no need to do that.
I understand, yes, I see. It's not over though.
Right. As you know, some of the court judges ruled in favor of the comment, and, uh, I feel, you know, judge on the office, the court ruled in favor of the comment, and our, yeah, it's, it's been over, so... Go with the judge's decision, maybe that's fine with the board.
We have to go, we have to follow the judge's decision, that's nothing we can, we can't come...
We can always argue with the judge.
Well, we shouldn't, because that's Effingham's problem, not our problem.
He will be at Effingham's.
Yeah, I understand, but it's really an Effingham ballpark.
Conspiracy theories.
I know. Okay. Anyone else about this, uh, what's going on here? So we'll, old business, and we'll get off the Mina gas station discussion and go to item number, oh. We jumped? We forgot, old business.
We're still talking about correspondence.
We're still talking about correspondence, yeah, I haven't got that one yet. Thank you. Anything else on correspondence?
I put a map on your table?
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. I don't know what the origin of that map is, other than it was on a Google website. And I didn't know if that was something that we wanted to pursue at some point, to either put a warrant article together or something like that to, um, allocate funds to update the zoning map, or at least, you know, the colors and stuff.
This looks pretty...
This is accurate.
It's pretty accurate, it looks pretty...
It's close.
It's really...
It's not 100%, it's just that I was intrigued, because the colors were so different than what we have. So, that's why I say I don't know what the origin of it is, but is it something that we would like to pursue in the future and ask for funds to do that?
Funds during the budget process? Now that would make, we need this...
With this name, that's inside.
Oh, yeah.
Since I got on the board, years ago.
Yeah, so, I make a, I'm going to make a motion.
Well, what's our, do we have any budget, ma'am?
We, not for something like this.
So, and because technically the budget ended on June 30th, so if the invoice would have to be free June 30th to calculate your budget. So that's why I say we could still put together an article or a request.
A request to the Board of Selectmen.
For this coming cycle.
Yeah, for the next budget cycle.
Right.
That's what I want to, I'm going to make a motion that we put in the request for the next budget cycle to get an updated version, complete updated version, in colored print, of the land used districts for the town of Parsonsville.
Can I make a little bit more, you sure can? Clearly delineating and contrasting colors.
Okay.
The blue and use, blah, 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 whatever you say.
Yeah, and I accept that, too. Add it to the motion. So when we put together, who puts together the budget? You do, don't you?
I did last year.
How did they, how did our budget come about last year? I didn't, I didn't do the budget.
We need to do it, every August. As a budget committee, you need to submit your, your, your budget, and then the budget committee...
Reviews of duty.
Definitely is. As far or against.
Okay, well...
It's something that I didn't do last year, but I, it's on my...
List for this year?
Yeah.
Okay, we definitely want to do that, and we'll, uh, about this amount especially.
We should, um, typically, we used to do it every August.
Yeah.
You know, we would also elect the chairman at that time, and we would go over what the budget was and what we needed and stuff.
Do we do, do we call a workshop to do that?
It would probably be better if we have other stuff on, on the agenda.
Oh, we're doing on the agenda?
Well, I'd say if we have a full agenda for next month, we should probably call a workshop, so we don't have a meeting at last, so, you know.
Do you have a cost?
That's what they're trying to do.
We're going to have to try to figure that out. We got the company that did this. The company's name is on here, so maybe we can call them, Desiree? And ask them what it would cost, say, Allen New Gloucester, they're out of Maine.
Oh, yeah. They're, they're, I actually, I see them once a week, right about now.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
So you can ask that question, what it would, give us an estimate, so we can budget to how this was completely done, and done in such detail, that the graphics would definitely delineate all the different districts.
Before you go to us spending money, could you find out the provenance of this map? When they made it? Because this may be told, if this is accurate, I don't see any point to, you know, let's establish what this is, when it was made. If the districts have been changed since then, otherwise we can use this.
Right.
Right. Okay.
You can contact SFBDC, too.
Yeah, that's a couple things I would, I'm not, that's never accurate.
This just came from McDonald, it didn't come from them.
No, but I mean, they probably would have something there, or, I can ask.
So do you want to go ahead with your motion, or do you want to...
Yes, I want to go ahead and motion still. Do you have a second for that motion? Oh, Andy seconded it. All in favor of the motion about the map? Unanimous? Nice, this still looks decent.
I have one more thing.
Yes?
I put an Excel sheet on your table.
Yes, I saw that.
That's, I was playing around in San Diego with some stuff, and that is, the items on there are pulled directly from the ordinance, but they're in a smaller, more concise format, I guess.
And that's mainly for us, the board?
Yep.
I see that.
I didn't know if it would help or not, and feel free to use it or not use it, but...
But if we use it, we got the motion to make it part of the record.
I mean, you're, you're following the ordinance, so it's, it's a tool to use the ordinance.
Because our checklist, we have a defined checklist already. But then I did a clap, I asked you to bring me a copy.
Well, that, that's on the application. This is everything else that goes on before or during and after the application.
Article two.
So, Article three is Section 5, which is A and D, which is on the application, which is all the, the whole list of the...
That's the application, yeah.
Right, so everything around it, like the notice, the butters, review, the public hearing, sidewalk, that stuff.
So you use the same, uh, hallway, do you why? Yeah. No, Article seven, performance guarantee. Have you guys got any comments on this? Anyone?
I think it's nicely put together and easy to read.
Yeah. Anyone else have any comments?
It's basically, yeah, it's basically checklist.
Who voted, now we vote it?
So you have a pen and paper, as we go down.
Yeah.
And cut down a few shortcomings.
Okay. Anybody, no other comments this time? What would we call this?
Well, is that for personal use, or is that for?
I think this...
Are we going to be submitting it with anything?
I don't think so, this is for personal use.
Yeah, this, again, this is just like a concise, this is the ordinance in order, just more concise and in your face of, okay, when we get an application, is it minor or major? And the butters notices, do I, could be independent review, we need a public hearing, we need a sidewalk. It's just, it's a more concise and...
So basically, it's for each, for us as to use as a guideline. It's not the application. The application is totally different.
No, no, no.
So checklist is our response, is correct?
Right.
Right. So basically, it's just for each individual.
Right, site plan review checklist.
I see, I hear you right.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think it's a nice to have, I don't think we have to put it on, put it on any record.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else have any comments on that? Any comments on that? Okay. All right. Enough said. Review of correspondence, you say you had one more thing?
No, that was the one.
That was it?
Yeah.
Now then, we have, let's go down to item number five, review of minutes. I've already read it.
I've read it, too.
I don't blow up, I don't see any, anybody see any problems? I didn't see none either. I read it home.
Hey, Aaron didn't reach out and say the right shoes, so...
No. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't send you anything either, because I didn't see any problems. All in favor of the minutes as written, as written?
Motion.
Make a, I'll make a motion, as written. Any second? Saban? All in favor? Unanimous? Old business. The Mina gas station discussion, we went through that, a couple of correspondence we had up there, and we basically decided, we don't want any more correspondence. We're going to not follow up on anything at this time.
You know, I'll undertake, because I'm staying in touch with that anyway. If anything really changed radically, I will inform the board.
Okay. So you'll stay with that, what you've been doing? Okay. Okay, feels good. Okay. Item B, under old business number six, is LD 2003 discussion. 2003 discussion. LD 2003 discussion. If I got anything they want to bring up on that? That's about that extra housing.
Did we reach out to one of the state representatives to get some information?
Andy said he was going to.
I have been, we're playing phone back at this point, but Heidi Sampson, who's our rep, who's very responsive, and I hope I'll be able to get in touch with her in the next couple of days. I'll write up something on that, and then...
I agree, Ray, no, she's not our rep anymore.
Huh?
She's not our rep anymore.
She's not?
They rezoned?
Who's our rep now?
She's only our rep for a very short period. She's now just got Alfred and that area.
So, who's our rep?
It will be... Second, Senator Woodson is running for that seat.
Oh, he's running?
Is it Levine running, too?
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm sure she has something to say, she's, 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 um... I don't know if anybody's come back and reread that thing.
It's a mess.
It really says nothing, as you can tell.
It does, it just, it does, it runs you around in circles, and then they say it's not effective to next, what, office them next year? July, or office them next year, anyway?
And they're supposedly working on it, on so many levels, or supposedly working on so many adjustments.
And it's going to, if it comes about, it's going to cause a lot of problems with every community, especially our land use ordinance. That's just how it is. So, I guess we'll just have to wait and see what happens.
I think we have to watch it, it's going to be...
Just keep an eye on it. Anything comes up forward, Desiree, make sure you put it before us.
Well, I actually just thought, um, Denmark has a group of towns, and I don't think Parsonsville's on their list. I'll forward over from San Diego what they've come up with so far, because they're trying to, I think they were putting together a letter for either the senate or the representatives or something.
Okay.
So I'll forward that over.
Okay. Okay, we've already covered, um, all right, now we're down to, uh, six, item C, site plan review. We're actually, Dawn Barrett's applicant, application for 20 Federal Road, Mount U-04, Lot 004. Change of use from retail to residential. And we were to read you the email we got from, that she sent out, text message to the Board of Selectmen, forward to us, that she's pulled her application. She no longer desires to change the use. Is that okay? Isn't that nice? D, site plan review, Catherine Hadley, applicant, A.J.'s Lane, Mount U-07, Lot 08. Current and proposed use, summer camp, bathroom addition. We talked about that some already. We talked about the site, everything, it looks like it's in order from what Saban tells me. And you were there, you said, look, it's fine to you, too, and Aaron, was you there?
Yep.
It was just fine to you also, huh?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any other comments about this site plan review? If not, do we have a motion?
Well, their application is seen as incomplete, it's standard, it seems like they provided the stuff to make.
We have, yeah, we have to accept it as a, as a complete application.
I'm going to accept the application as complete.
Okay, second. Saban? All in favor? Show of hands. Unanimous? All right, now we have a complete application. All right, do we need to, uh, do we feel like making a motion tonight to either approve or disapprove of this application? I don't see why it couldn't be approved, because everything is here, everything is laid out, and, uh...
There's no objection from any of others, it's static.
So we have no static, no nothing, nobody showed up for the public hearing? Nothing?
I make a motion.
You make a motion to approve it, as submitted? Okay, I have a second on that? Roger seconds it. All in favor, show of hands. Unanimous? Your application approved? You're done?
I will be in touch hopefully next week with the senior.
Okay, thank you so much. Appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all in the old business. Number seven, new business. A, site plan review, Colleen Allard, 27 Federal Road, Mount U-04, Lot 040. Proposed propane field station.
Before you go any further?
Yes, ma'am.
You're going to do it?
Yep.
Okay.
Make a motion to promote Roger Monroe to a voting member for this application.
Second, I said I won't, you say it. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
I forgot. I can't really clarify if we, because on the actual application, the submit, it says workshop. So what, are you here for?
I'm here, I didn't have to do the workshop, I had to come here and tell you guys what I'm doing, bring, uh, Steve with me to explain it, and, uh, I don't honestly even know why I'm here. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know that I would even have to come to a meeting to just put a propane tank in.
It's a change of use.
Yeah.
From, uh, from, uh, it's back in the recycle? It's called the retail fuel distributors from convenience store.
Okay, it's going from that side.
Redemption, I'm sorry.
It's going back into redemption section for that, though.
Right.
Back there in the corner.
Yeah, it's all one property at this point.
Has all that been listed as one property now?
Yeah, I believe it is.
Oh, we just have to know that for sure, that's all.
Yeah, I get one tax bill. Yeah, I get one tax bill. It was all combined through the lawyer.
So the lawyer combined it all for you as far as you know?
Yeah, it's all been done.
There's Ray, can you look that up?
Can't, I can't on my phone.
Okay.
And Debbie in the office confirmed that. Because they said, once village has one property, if they purchase another one, the property line, it's all now becomes one.
So it's not, hey, since we know from your situation.
Right.
When did you do it? Was it after April 1st last year?
Yes.
Okay.
No, it wasn't. I opened May 1st.
Okay, so it was after April 1st last year?
Then I opened.
Right, but when you did the deed?
Oh, yeah, it was before that.
Okay.
And all the same names are on the deed?
Everything.
Does that make it one property or does it?
Do it in your situation. And it does. It's supposed to.
And I also get the one tax bill.
She's getting one tax bill too. I heard that. She's only getting one tax bill for all that property. It has to be all under one.
Excuse me, I get a tax bill for the house, I believe. There's just a house behind it. But you'll have to check because I'm not 100% sure how the town did it.
It would be something that we have to look at.
Yes.
Look at the deed and look at-
We have to look at all of it. We'd have to make really sure about all of that.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, because we try to, this Aller, we're trying to do everything by the book as close as we can. And if we don't, I just think we make major mistakes if we don't do that.
Right, but regardless, with all due respect, there's already propane in the area. So it's not, it's not new to the village, I guess, is the-
No, that's not what we're saying. It's new to your lot.
Okay.
That's all we're saying. It's a new use on your property because right now you got back there as a recycle. And in the front part, nice gas station. In the front part is your gas station and your restaurant and your also quick stop.
Right, and I also do propane exchange and have done so.
In the front?
Right.
Right, and I understand that. But you don't fill. At this time, you do no filling.
No filling.
And that's what you're trying to do here.
That's correct.
Can I ask you, does this show the propane tank already installed?
Nope, that's my house.
I see.
So.
That's, that's on the other side of the fence because I don't want to- It's on, not on her property. That's for this house.
Nope, that is my property as well.
But it's still outside the fence. And you said you get a separate tax bill for that one?
I do.
Okay. So this is separate from this property?
This is relevant.
Right. Okay. I understand what you're trying to say. And then you got a site plan review application. This is one thing that we always won't done in detail. And there's not much on this that's done at all. Only thing you've done is give us a little area for the, for the propane tank, okay? You put two butters here. And I know there's a lot more butters than that. But, but they have to be put on this form. On our form, so we don't have to go and decipher all this.
I had Jesse, went his review and make sure it was complete before I even submitted it.
It's not completed, I'm sorry. It's not completed.
But there isn't, the butters have to be within so many feet.
500 feet.
Right, so what other butters are in?
Not on this form that we, I'm sitting with you, that was given to you. See this here? Where you listed two?
Yeah.
And you get listed all other butters like this?
That's all there is within 500 feet of where we're going with this?
Well, it's 500 feet from every border. So, so people across the road.
Okay.
Everybody. So I counted at least 13 on the tax map.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wonder how come that wasn't, I had plenty of time to get that.
You have the labels there. There were 30 something, 40. So, there's a, in your packet, there's a list of labels. All of those were sent.
I don't see no one, oh, oh, yeah. Who sent these?
Of me.
You sent them out?
Yes, because they have to be sent out when we receive an application.
Okay. See that?
Thank you.
So you did it.
Thank you.
You did it. And it needs to be added to this. There's what?
A bunch.
30 on the front.
There's probably 30, it's two pages.
Well, there's 28 on the front. And I think I ended up with like 48 or something like that.
So, so can I just understand, so I have to send these out? Well, just so I know, they have to go from every corner of the property? What's required?
It's already been done.
She's done it.
I have a map here, I think.
I guess I just didn't understand that come, that piece. Because I was going from where the tank was gonna be. If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, kind of.
It goes from the corner of your property?
Right.
500 feet from the corner, so.
You wanna go through this bit, but that?
Yeah.
We don't have any.
Well, thank you for that.
So this, this is what the tax map looks like. So everybody agreed that it's about this.
I, when we go through the form here, we're gonna go through it with you and let you know everything that you're missing. Have you got a copy of this form you can give her to?
I have a, I have it in my email.
Okay.
I sent it to you.
Okay. If you start. You make any other questions that you guys, before we keep going forward?
I know a question about this map.
Yeah.
So is, I guess we need to find out, is this a property line here?
I don't know.
Is this line you indicated here the property line for your house?
I think it's a fence.
It's a fence.
Okay, what's fill plant mean?
Fill plant?
Yeah.
That's the inches that I said.
That's gonna be at the house?
Is that part of the kerosene fill?
No, it's-
Propane.
Propane.
Yeah.
It's a fuel station tank.
So it's going, the fill station's going on your private property? Not on your store property?
No, it's right at the redemption.
It's redemption.
Okay, so this is what I'm trying to-
Inside the fence area.
If you look at the map, it shows it under by the house. Are you seeing what I'm saying?
Instead of over there. So it's a fancy fence down there.
You drew it backwards.
It's inside that fence.
You're right, Saban. He's right. You guys don't roll back the fence for the fragments.
That's not supposed to reflect the fence. That's, that's the edge of the table.
Anyway, we're gonna need a more detailed.
Yeah.
Because this needs, this needs bearings. It needs, it needs a little distance from the end of the store to the property line, the both property lines. You need all your setbacks. And what else do we need?
Let me, in terms of that drawing?
That drawing, it needs water sections.
Of course that. Is that mine or yours? Oh, your. If you go back up to page two, up to the red top, you've got the name and addresses of property owners within 500 feet. Of course, she did, okay? Sketch map showing general location of site within the town. We need a site map too, showing your location within the town.
You can use this.
She's got the tax map.
Yeah, just gotta mark it.
You just gotta indicate on it.
You gotta indicate on it.
Can you identify yourself, sir?
Yes, I'm Steve McCusker. I'm an employee of Down East Energy. I work out of Wyndham main office. And I've been working with Colleen for a few months now to try to get this set up.
It's, you know, we still gotta go through this process.
I understand. But I do want to explain a couple of things. I'm gonna give you, each of you a business card. If you have any questions, you're welcome to call me. If you have any technical type of questions. But this map here is the one the state-
That's what I thought.
Has us used.
That's okay.
I've done dozens and dozens of these dispensing fill stations in my 40-year career in the propane industry. I've never had to go through a town review of this type of setup. The towns that I've dealt with, with Portland, South Portland, Westboro, and New Naam, Wyndham, we defer to the state because the state has the people that know what information they need in order to approve a fill station. Generally, and not to diminish anything that you folks know, generally, the towns don't have people capable of knowing what is what of the codes that the state requires. So this is the form the state asks us to fill out to give them a site plan. Once the unit is in place, everything is set up, the fencing's involved, all the signage is involved, all the training has been done. I mean, it's a very involved process. Then the state inspector comes and he says, yea or nay? You have to have crash protection, you have to have the fencing, two gates. And the state inspector, that is the final authority to approve.
We're not trying to, you know, we're not trying to usurp that function in any way, excuse me, in any way address it.
Right.
But we are here to enforce our land ordinances.
And why, I don't understand your land ordinances. I'm just saying that.
That's what this is all about.
Yeah. What we, what we do is we, we go by what the state requires. And that's what this site plan reviews. And then, I think you had another page where you talked about the electrical requirements. I think you have that in that packet too. I think Colleen sent that to you. So that's how we generally do the process.
Okay. What we have here in our form is what we've got to have for the town of Parsonsville, our planning board, LUO, land use and ordinance guide. This is where this comes from.
Okay.
That's what it's all about.
Okay.
It's not what he's talking about. That's, that's, that's for him and the state, that's just fine. I think that's great. It's wonderful.
It is.
And, but we're trying to make sure that you need all the guidelines that's set forth in our land use ordinance. Not necessarily the propane, fuel sta- stand and station.
That's a parallel process. It's like if somebody puts in a, needs a variance receptacle system, they gotta go through the state to drive permit. They still have to come before us.
They still gotta come to us.
So we're not, we're not questioning your end of it. That's not, that's not our-
That's not our, that's not-
We don't intend to.
We don't get involved in that. And-
I'm just trying to help Colleen.
Understand.
Get this taken care of.
But we, we want to help her too. We're not trying to slow her down or stop her or nothing. We just gotta make sure if we don't do this and the next person that comes in, I say Mr. Wright brought one in and he said, well, but you didn't know how her do all this. You didn't make her do A, B, C, D, and E and F. And you're making me do it. See how, what's gonna cause us, this gonna cause the planning board and the town problems. We gotta do what's outlined in our land use ordinance. Okay? Yes? It's not that much.
No, no, that's fine. I guess I just was totally confused on
Okay.
why I had to, I guess because I've already gone through the whole thing.
You have?
Gas and everything else.
Yes.
I didn't, I didn't even know I'd have to do it again. I thought it was like a one-time.
Because you're adding a new function in that you didn't get approved always before. And because everything else is approved, Houston, well, I think it's already approved. I'll have to do this again. I understand that.
So, so in my thought process, right? How, and total respect to you. How is this different than, geez, I've had regular potato chips for 32 years, but now I wanna bring bags of popcorn in? What is the difference?
It's still a food product. See, we're petroleum, petroleum-based products are really controlled quite a bit, even in our book.
You are, right now, you're a general convenience store. And a redemption center. Those, those are what you were purging to ask.
With gas is okay, but not with propane. Propane fills that.
Okay, so is propane considered a different thing than the gas?
Different use and a different service.
Thank you, that's what I was, that's what I was trying to understand.
Yeah. It's not, it's not your propane you have out front in those little canisters that you sell. That's totally different.
Okay.
You're inputting in a propane fill stand where you don't have people bring tanks to you, you're gonna fill them.
Right.
And that's different.
Okay.
That's totally different.
Totally respectable.
Yeah. So if you do all of this and you go A through, is it N? A through N? Because of the proposed development activity. We're not gonna require her to do P. There's no driveways or parking, parking lots.
Subdivision stuff.
This is all subdivision down here.
She still needs dimensions of proposed signs.
Right. Dimensions of any proposed signs.
We should go through it like we always do.
Yeah, let's go through it then. I did A already. Probably what she did. B, sketch map back, sketch map showing where you are in the town. You have to highlight that.
Put it over there.
Oh, your tax map.
C, boundaries of all contiguous properties under control of the owner applicant. That means all your property now, it's really one. You wanna see a drawing of that. You've got, how many lots were there originally, two or three?
There was.
Don't count the house.
Oh.
What do you combine, three or four?
One, two, three, I believe.
Yeah.
Am I right? Yeah, I was gonna say.
Okay.
Because there was that small piece too. Geez, 32 years of growth.
So we noticed.
The easiest explanation is she would have to zoom out.
We don't need to figure that out.
Around the properties and show everything that's within the property.
And then we also, D?
Okay.
Yeah. We want a copy of the deed to the property?
Okay.
Or the purchase of the property. Name, investment, squishy number, and seal of the land survey architect or engineer? Or a similar professional?
That would be Mr. Japp.
Would be that gentleman who repaired any plan.
Okay.
You gotta put him in there. Barrier, this is all property lines of property to be developed as sources of information. That's F, G. Location, size of existing sewer and water mains, culverts. We wanna know where these are at underground because we wanna see how that's in relation to your propane fill stand. I don't wanna call it something else. I don't want to call it something else, it's a stand, because you're going to fill there.
Station.
Location, dimensions, ground flood elevations above ground level. You have to probably have someone engineering to tell you what this is. Location, dimensions of existing driveway, streets, parking, loading areas, and walkways. You've got lots of them.
So do you want...
Just follow it, just follow it right down.
Okay.
And just lay it out for us.
Okay.
That's the ideal thing to do. All the way down through...
Zoom out.
Okay.
All the way down through O for sure. O, I want you to do that one. You don't need to do P.
It's just repeating itself.
It's just repeating itself because this mainly down here is for development of, it's divisional development.
Right to N.
Did you say F through N? Under existing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And then down here on the, of course it's proposed.
Yeah.
Make sure you do O.
Yeah.
You got any signs going up?
Yes.
All right, you got to do T. For your signage. What about exterior lighting? For that?
Yeah.
Got to do U. Demonstration of any applicable state applications or permits which have been or may be issued for you to have that fill station.
That's me.
That's you. Make sure she's got that.
She needs it.
We want to see that permit.
Hold on a second.
A copy of the application.
So she, you're saying she needs O? She needs Q, she's putting in any driveways, parking, loading areas, or walkways, which I assume she is?
No, it's already there. It's already there, it's, no, she's not putting nothing new in there.
Okay.
It's existing. R, she don't need to do, F she doesn't need to do, well, yes, she should.
It's pretty much up there.
No, it's up here, it's already up there at the top. But she has, T she's got to do because of signage.
Yeah.
And then she's got to do W about the permit?
U.
The signage is already existing.
Well, you just got to have it on the drawing.
In the front, okay.
Yeah, we want to see it. Yeah?
May I ask a question? The way this works with the state, in order for me to get the actual...
Permit?
License. The tank has to be there. The instructor won't even come to approve it unless it's there.
So Jesse, so Jesse Windus allowed me to do what I did, and I took pictures. And then he said, "I have to check with you before the tank gets brought in."
That's what we're doing now. That's what this is being done.
The tanks, let me explain to you. First got to submit a complete application, all stuff would be talented. Wouldn't jump the gun and put in the tanks if you know what's going on in that thing. All right, where they put in tanks before the town...
I'm not going to. That's why Jesse told us to hold tight, but...
Yeah, he's right.
But I'm just telling you because you...
I can, I can show you the application to the state, but I can't show you approval until the tank is actually there.
Understood. Right, you mean the permit.
Yeah, if you can approve the permit.
No, we can't approve the permit.
No, if you can approve that you've seen the permit. The permit. I can't get an actual license or a permit until the tank is there.
Well, all this has to be done for us, even though, because right now she has an incomplete application. That's what we're saying, it's incomplete. And we have to table this until she comes back and gives us a complete application.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I'm just chuckling because I went over this like twice with Jesse. I met with him like on three occasions. I showed him the packet, and I said, "Am I okay? Is there anything else?" And he said, "You have a complete application." So...
Sorry, I'm sorry.
And W does allow for you to show us the application, not the...
Yeah, I don't see the...
I can't get approval.
Yeah, if the application is part of the packet, that's...
Okay.
And I would say X as well, schedule of construction, just a general, it doesn't have to be like exactly, just a general.
Also...
We just don't want you to come back and get it and say this is...
If I need further guidance on this, I may email you guys.
Okay.
Because the next time I come, it needs to be... Yes. But if it's sent to you, if you try it to the meeting, then will I get the, "Yes, this is a complete application"? Try it to losing that time and come into the next one?
No, we'd have to review it, we'd have to review it. They asked me a workshop to do that.
I think maybe that's why he had me down for a workshop. I don't know.
Our assumption would say workshop because then we would have reviewed all of this so that you would have been here tonight with more complete information.
Okay, but the workshop got canceled or something like that?
Yeah, we didn't have one.
Okay.
Yes, that's right.
The problem was that the application to be on tonight's agenda was that he submitted the day before the workshop. So the workshop would have been put off another month.
Oh.
So that would, going to the workshop wouldn't have helped you be on tonight's agenda.
Oh.
So that's why we put you on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
So...
At least you found out, you didn't have to wait another month to find this out.
Yes, right, yes.
Yes.
So for the August agenda, this completed out, it's to be in by August 3rd, which is the workshop night.
That's my birthday.
Maybe we'll give you a present.
Make sure I got everything that you want.
You don't want to take the present from Parsonsville?
No. It comes with strings.
No, no, no strings, please. What do you mean?
I think I've written everything down, but can you just go over to make sure that I got everything that you want? I know I put the letter together, I want to make sure I got it all.
What am I going to do with you?
I don't know.
Play back the recording.
Okay, we want everything A through N.
A through N, yes.
Then we want O. P.
I thought you said no P.
Well, I did because it's up there in the other one, I'm sorry. It's up there in the other one.
Okay.
That's I up there. Okay, then we do want, wait a minute. Water supply and wastewater is up there too, isn't it?
Yeah.
We want G because I want to see proposed surface water drainage. Which way is the water going to drain away from that?
That's also on G.
It's on G up there?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I said.
Okay. Good, thank you. T, no, we need T signs too.
U related.
Yeah, we got to have T.
Yeah.
U.
Yeah.
Just that application.
Unless it's up there or not. It's up there or not, okay. It's in the other, I said the same thing, Andy. Yeah, okay. And also W. It needs to be, and what you can do, if you go back over this other page of recycling content, "Application must include the following exhibits and information. Please attach information on a separate sheet of paper or note that the item is not applicable. Give a reason." Like, if A wasn't applicable, just write, "Why is it not applicable?" in your mind. But we still got something down for A. I'm just giving you an example.
Okay.
And then like down here for the state, state application for permits for W. Right down there, must, cannot be applied until the fill stand is in place and the state inspects.
Well, it can be, it can be applied, it can't be permanent.
It won't be permanent until...
That's what I'm asking for, a permit.
You can say application...
If you want to have a permit, we'll have an application.
We'll have a copy of the application.
Right. We're going to have a copy of the application today.
Yeah, so I'm going to provide that.
Okay, all right.
So there's a permit which has been for named the issue.
Right. Yeah, we just leave that down. Okay. I think you got it, I miss. Last thing, if anybody got anything else about this application, go to the board.
Uh-oh, I mean, there's some existing questions that have been raised here in the past about footprint of the entire thing and changing of the...
Right.
Of the, I don't know if we should raise that at this time.
Not at this time.
Okay.
We have a letter from one of your butters.
Yes. Peter and I talked two days ago.
He sent this long letter, it's a page.
We talked for about three hours.
And he's really concerned. And I under, and when I read this, I understand what's going on. And I just hope that the two of you guys can talk some more and work something out.
Yeah, well, to be quite honest with you, there is nothing that needs to be worked out. I'm one business, he's another business.
Okay.
And, and, you know, I don't even know if I should get into all this.